All right. I'd like to call this to mortify our commissioners meeting in order, August 24th, 2023. All commissioners are present, either in person or virtually. I'd like to ask Chief Metapton if he was the latest in the place of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and the God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes to approve the regular meeting on July 25th, special meeting on August 8th, and special meeting on August 10th. If there is no comments about any of them, I'll ask for motion to approve all on time.
I move that we approve all the minutes at one time.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve all three sets of minutes. Any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, Commissioner comments. Mr. Fuller.
I think we owe a great deal of thanks to the four of our firefighters that went over to Hawaii to help out. I understand that they're coming back tomorrow, coming back safely.
I won't say much because I think it'd be difficult for me and probably him, but I just want to briefly thank Chief Metapton. This is his last, I believe, official meeting before he retires. Fantastic job, David, especially under extremely difficult unprecedented circumstances. I won't say more. We'll have more next week again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Padilla.
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Thompson.
Well, I also echo what Commissioner Fuller says. Great job for our folks that went to Hawaii, Maui, and it's a difficult job, and they're going to need some support when they get back for sure because that was not an easy task. And our guys are up for it, and we need to support them as much as we can when they get back. Also, congrats to Chief Dave for all his efforts and stuff in the last few months. We appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, I do want to thank Chief Adapton. This is going by too fast. They wouldn't figure out a way to have another meeting or two. Anyway, I'd like to make one other comment. I know I've said this in the past, but the rotational highlights that we get are really, it's very rewarding to read them. And actually, I've got some good information from them. There was one, I don't know, a couple ships ago or a couple weeks ago, I don't know how you refer to these, but in one of them, it said that now that our midlet has passed, that our next measure is going to be regional fire authority to include a service benefit charge. I did not know that. I must have missed the meeting or something where that was discussed. So please keep those highlights coming. All right. Are there any public comments? Okay, hearing none. I don't think there are any commissioner committee reports. Item seven, resolution number 634. This is sort of a housekeeping item. Chief could read the first and last paragraph.
Happy to. Resolution 634, a resolution of the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue. I believe that's soon to change. Also, known as King County Fire Protection District Number 39, King County, Washington, adopting an agent to receive claims against the district under chapter 4.96 of the Revised Code of Washington, adopted by the Board of Commissioners of South King Fire and Rescue, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting this 24th day of August 2023, with the following commissioners being present and voting.
Is there a motion and a second to approve resolution number 634?
I'll move resolution number 634.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion is being seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approving resolution 634, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carry unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item eight, human resources.
Yes, good evening. Do you want me to lead or would you like to lead?
You want to go ahead and lead us through it. Tell us what we need to hear.
Well, I thank you again for your trust in us, human resources for this process. On August 10th, I gave you a presentation, and then follow-up from that, we had some tasks assigned for you from there. And the first one was to review the job description. There were a couple of items that were still unanswered that we were going to be expecting for finalizing tonight on the job description, so I'll just start with that. If you had a chance to review those.
Move it.
So the one part of the job description, it was regarding the education requirements for the fire chief. And there was an option, what was in there already, was that you would keep it as a years of experience.
So the question is, do we want to keep that paragraph in there, that we can, years of experience and so?
Yes, as a substitute.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think to provide the board with maximum flexibility, we should keep that third paragraph in the job description. That will allow us to consider a maximum number of candidates who perhaps not, they may not have a bachelor's degree, but they may have extensive experience. It would substitute in our judgment in the selection process, so I think we should keep that in.
Very great.
I agree, Jim.
Okay. So we put that in form of a motion?
Yes, I would move approval of the draft job description to include that third paragraph that starts years of job experience, progressive leadership and education, et cetera.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to leave that paragraph in there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, carry unanimously.
All right, and just one other item on the job description to clarify. It had in there a requirement that the fire chief live within the bounds of the fire district within one year of hire. Most of the job descriptions that we collected from other departments, that we collected up to nine of them, only one other department had that requirement. And so we were wondering and wanting to know if that was something you still wanted to stay in or would you mind it to be omitted.
Mary, I think at the last meeting, we talked about whether or not there was a state law. Can you refresh our memories on, or update us if you talked to our legal counsel about that question? Is there a state, is there some state provision on that?
There is not, and Eric Quinn is here. I thought I forwarded his message to you, but there was no state law or statute that required fire chiefs to live within the bounds of the district that they serve.
That's correct.
So we, what would be an alternative, or we not have a requirement at all?
The others just don't have the requirement at all within their, within their job description. So it would just be just taking it out.
So you know a requirement in terms of living within a certain number of minutes, a certain number of miles, living in the county or the district, just no requirement?
No requirement that I could see.
A question through the chair to our legal counsel, Eric. If we get down to a candidate that doesn't live within the district, is that a term that could be negotiated, as the chairman just mentioned, a certain distance or time to respond to the event of an emergency? Is that something that could be negotiated? Would that be legal to do so and enforceable?
Well, it, if it's reasonable, if they're to live within reasonable proximity of the district, that would be reasonable and negotiable. One might argue that requiring them to live within the district could infringe upon their fundamental Fifth Amendment right to travel. But it kind of depends on every circumstance, so you'd have to check in with me about a specific contractual provision you'd be interested in. But it's fairly common in chiefs' contracts to have a provision stating that they need to live within reasonable proximity of the district. It's not required by law, but it is something that is negotiable.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah, I would be in favor of not mentioning it, but that, putting that reasonable distance is, we can decide later what's reasonable.
So we'll leave it out of the job description?
No, I think if.
Or you want to put it in reasonable, yeah.
It says reasonable, within reasonable distance.
I'd suggest perhaps, Mary, work with Eric on an appropriate sentence to include that would, that he'd be comfortable with.
Anyone?
Could you do that informally? Do you need a motion?
Sure.
I would move that we include some language that both our HR director and legal counsel would agree on, include in the job description for reasonable proximity, residence of, that would be of reasonable proximity to the district.
And so also, just the rest of the job description, I had sent out a final draft after we met on August 10th, and I just wanted to know if this was, the rest of the job description was intact and it's your.
I have a question that I noticed on page two.
Excuse me, let me just back up. Is everybody in agreement with Dave's motion?
Oh, yeah, we need, if something's formal, I guess we have to second. Second.
Okay. The motion has been made and seconded, that we include in the job description some language that person lived in reasonable proximity. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Bill.
Fourth item down, responsible for collaborative profession, for preparation of the annual district financial budget and so on. Our discussions have made, I think, it clear that we would like to include in that wording the collaboration specifically with the finance executive director, Jerry Allen. I always clearly made that. Didn't we?
I know we talked about it, yeah. So in the fourth bullet, we put in there somehow that responsible for collaboration in collaboration with the executive director, yeah, something to that effect.
And as the procedure that we just received, what he's laid out as that budget preparation, it's fully collaborative, it involves everybody at every level. And I think that just the fact that there is a collaborative nature to the budgeting process, and we just need that strong statement of leadership.
And you could also add it just at the end where it says, collaboration, preparation of annual district budget and the district's annual reports, and then add in with the executive director and part of his finance division. You want the whole finance division in there?
Why don't you, why don't you grab something else and just, you know, send that paragraph out to us.
Okay.
Anything else?
Since you've got a good idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
I, I'll make a motion that we adopt the, the draft job description is distributed with the, those two exceptions.
Which two exceptions?
Well, the residency requirement and the inclusion of the executive director in the budgeting process.
Just for clarification, presumably whichever search firm we pick will have, will want to have some input. So this is our final draft, but that doesn't mean it couldn't change again, right? Based on input, the search firm.
Yeah, the search firm will take our job description, and then they use pieces from it to develop their brochures and their materials for advertising.
But they might have, that part might have, the lead recruiter might have some substantive input as well, which would come back to the board, right?
It would have to come back to the board.
Have to come back to the board.
Yeah.
Just informal understanding that this isn't necessarily the final final.
But it is our final draft.
Yeah.
Mark, did you make a motion?
Yes, sir. We accept the final draft is submitted with the two exceptions of the residency requirement and the, what was it we were just talking about?
Preparation of budget.
The preparation of the budget to include the executive director and finance.
Is there a second?
Second. So real quick, I have Commissioner Berger making a motion at the very first of the discussion of human resources topic.
That was the lead in the paragraph on job experience and so on.
Okay.
Which we voted on, I think.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that that is incorporated with Thompson's, because he said two things.
Oh, yes. So there's really three things.
So it's really three things.
Yeah.
Any more discussion, comments? Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to approve the job description with the three changes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. All right. Thank you.
So that doesn't incorporate Berger's changes?
It is with the three changes.
There's three.
I think what she's saying is that Commissioner Thompson only mentioned two. Do we need to go back?
Yeah, we already, well, we already approved that amendment as was distributed with the draft.
Mark, I think we'll already be more comfortable if your motion referred to all three changes we made.
Okay, I can, I'll amend that.
As you said.
Were we getting changes on the first one?
We made a decision to include it. It was already there.
It was already there.
First, you made a motion that was seconded, and you guys voted on it to include the paragraph. And then there was discussion in regards to the residency, which was a motion and a second, and voted on. And then there was a motion in regards to the budget with executive director, and that motion was voted and.
Yeah, the residency was an addition.
Right.
What do we need to do?
So we.
Just new motion?
We voted on the three things individually.
Yeah.
But Thompson's approved the entire job description with two of the three.
Because the first one was already there. We didn't add, we didn't add that first one.
Okay.
It was already in the draft, so we voted on to confirm and to leave it in the draft.
Okay.
I don't, I think his motion is accurate, that we add, we made two additions.
Gotcha.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah, just, this, so quick, we had gone over like an application supplemental questionnaire, and we had listed about nine questions, and then we decided to take a piece, one of the questions, and divide it up. One of the questions was on, had political activism, but it was divided up to be fire department funding and political advocacy, and that's working with city and public officials. And this is just one of like the supplemental pre-screen questionnaire items that we had discussed. And also, we added emergency medical services to that list. Does Timmy have copies of that with you?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So I highlighted the ones that we had made the changes to. I think that was just, this is a real official item, but it was just something that we were going to include as part of our questioning for the fire chief.
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I'd like to add a clarifying comment to the EMS on the supplemental question. It should be the King County EMS versus this general EMS.
Okay.
Somebody coming from out of state or what have you, needs to have a little bit better understanding of the nuances of King County EMS and funding and what have you.
Okay, very good. So in your packet that was distributed this week, we had included a proposal from Proffman, and we talked about on August 10th, we had information on the other, the other outside agency named Mercer, and we went through that whole proposal, and so we've been given this new proposal from Proffman. And I was able to follow up and obtain three references on the lead recruiter, Warren Merritt, and I think you know Warren Merritt, he's, he was the recruiter for the assistant of chief of operations, and we had three good references, one from the chief of Lewis County, one from the chief of Bashan Island, and then Chief Mars from Buryan, all paid him, very good references. There was also an email from Sonia Proffman that identified his most recent placements in 2023, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, about nine different agencies. Some of them were out of state, it was like all, three were from Colorado, the rest were from Washington. And their pricing was included, it was, it came in lower than Mercer. One of the things, just to consider with Proffman, different from Mercer, is that they will not have upfront application packets, or that's their standard practice, is not to give application packets to boards or to the agencies that they're working with. And they will, they do all of their screening, a lot of it is just done within their agency. I know, I didn't work with them before, so I'm not sure how, what the experience was last time, but what I understood, there were some things that they had to concede on because we wanted them to, we want a little bit more collaboration in the process.
Is this, are you referring to Mercer?
Well, right now, I'm referring to Proffman.
Okay.
That they, unlike Mercer, they keep everything pretty well contained, they deal with the candidates, and they may give you like a summary of each candidate after they pre-screen them. One of the things that Chief Mars indicated is that what they wish they would have done was, in getting the summaries from Mr. Merritt, that they wish they would have had a little bit more expanded summary with more details about the candidates, mainly ones that maybe they turned away. So those were just some comments that were made by him. And they want to keep it pretty well contained. When we talked about Mercer on August 10th, Mercer is, it's, they're the Tucson, Arizona based agency. They just feel a little bit more collaborative and very flexible, and they would provide a link to their application platform and the, so that you could be able to log in and link in and just view the candidates as they, the applications as they've been coming in. Also willing to be flexible and utilizing our questionnaires and just, you know, kind of tailoring their process to really what our needs and what our wants are.
Things like that, it's, is doing, is doing some of the screening that we ought to be doing, where we ought to have a, be able to look at everybody. We know what our department needs, we know what we're looking for, and Proffman has some idea of what we're looking for, but they don't have a complete idea.
If I could, I'll ask Mitch to speak on this a little bit too, but I will say that the process for the ops chief that we use Proffman on was less than optimal in their performance, to be fair. Mitch has some background on that that I think is probably the guy you're ready for you to hear.
Yeah, to Chief's point, the content creation component, the writing the narrative of the district was less than stellar, I had to go through and modify and edit quite a bit to give the final product, very little input from them. Mary's right, the process is pretty closed in terms of how to review candidates. However, I did let Warren know that I wanted to change the process, and I wanted to pre-screen, or we wanted to pre-screen every applicant that came through, and they were willing to do so. I don't think that's an issue. With that said, we do have all the supplementary information regarding the district already prepared, so I think going through Proffman would be the easier solution in terms of cost, because all the labor was done with the previous chief. Well, with that being said, I would say that Proffman is closed. They certainly are open to allowing us to vet through the candidates.
Through the chair, Mary, I've got a couple of questions on Sonia Proffman's August 21st email to you. For the commissioners, this is page, well, there's no page number on it in the electronic packet, it's 50 out of 94, I don't, I guess you guys have.
Yeah, I have a copy of it.
I don't quite know where it follows. I think it follows the reference checks on Proffman that Mary obtained. I know Mary has it, but if you want to follow along. So two questions, Mary. It says, the 2023 fire chief recruitments with Warren Merritt, Warren Merritt as lead, and Warren Merritt is who they're proposing as lead for our recruitment and their proposal.
Yeah, he does.
There are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. Do you know if those are all, are all actual fire chief as opposed to other chief officer positions, when she said that?
She does fire chief recruitments in her.
Do you understand that she, did you talk to her about that? You actually confirmed he's done all of these as fire chief recruitments?
That's what she did.
Because the reference checks were not nearly that many.
Yeah, I, well, she, I didn't have this list before. I had gone and sent out references to the Buryan and the Lewis County, those that I, that I was aware that they had those processes going on. But I did not get this list until afterwards. I did not solicit references from all of these.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my other question is, yeah, the paragraph, let's see. And then my, my other question is, yeah, the pair, let's see. The one, two, third paragraph down on the first page of her email, where it says, I don't think your supplemental questions are not necessary.
Oh, yeah.
I think she meant, I don't think your supplemental questions are necessary.
That's right, yeah.
And many of them we incorporated. What is your feeling about that?
Well, she feels that a lot of these questions, they're already incorporated into their process somehow. My, my vision upfront was that we would send these questions out ahead of time as if it's like a pre-screening. But it sounds like they prefer more like less is more, where you put out just a few questions and then you bring in a lot of candidates and then you, and then you vet through them, as opposed to sending them a lot of questions and maybe.
So how do you feel?
They would not, they would maybe deter them from applying.
How do you feel about that?
Well, I.
Given her, given her input, what's your, what's your conclusion and recommendation?
I think that we would want to know ahead of time. I think the idea of just sending out the questionnaire, and this is everything that we're looking for, Mercer is willing to do that. They're willing to use the questionnaires, they're willing to go out and just tailor this how we feel we want it and avoid a lot of people applying that really don't qualify. And I think their, their methods are just, you know, put it out there and bring them the masses and then screen through them. Where I think for us to have an efficient process and to get it done at the very time we matter, we want to know upfront, what is your experience in being a fire, sort of a fire chief? They focus a lot on the leadership side, which is very, very important, but we also want to know, okay, you're a good leader, but what do you, what do you know specifically about all of the aspects of the fire department and running fire department?
Thank you, Mark. We're asking them to give references of what departments that they have worked for or obtained chief for. Should we consider the departments that are listed? Are they big departments? Are they, are they organized like we are? Should we consider any of those, you know, for example, is, is Urien close enough to how we do things to feel comfortable that we regard a reference for Urien? Is Urien King County number two?
Yeah.
Should that be a factor at all?
Commissioners, for the record, Warren Merritt was a very nice person, a pleasure to work with. He wasn't difficult at all. It was more getting past some of the red tape, which wasn't challenging, but they have their parameters, but again, they're customizable. I'm not selling Proftman, I'm just giving my experience.
Yeah, and specifically asked, I knew that they had allowed them to, or allowed you last time to view candidates, that I specifically asked them, you know, we wanted to view and just pre-screen, but they, they have a, their process is that they keep things kind of private with candidates who are applying, and so they don't want to just share information. I'm sure that it's just part of their business model and how they operate. So, but it sounds like they have made exceptions, and if that's something that we would really want to insist on, we could.
In terms of searching for a, for a candidate, maybe I'm wrong, but somehow, oh, somewhere I got the impression that Mercer will look around more of the United States than Proftman might.
I mean, Proftman will do nationwide searches. He knows that, I noticed Colorado here, and the rest are from Washington. Mr. Mike Luther, where, or excuse me, Lecter, he does a lot of LinkedIn type of recruitment, and he does go sort of beyond, he's from Arizona, and he will expand his search force. You know, we told him west of Mississippi, but if there's pockets that are, that are on the eastern side of the United States, and he'll, he'll evaluate those pockets as, as they're comparable to our fire department. So he has a lot of experience in, in, you know, just working with fire departments. He was a city manager for 30 plus years. He's hired many fire chiefs. And I think that you're, from him, what you'll get is something more outside of our area, where it feels like Proftman maybe has a lot of in-state recruitment and some out-of-state. I think Mercer would give you, I think, a lot, a lot of candidates, or if he were to let them.
Mr. Chair, it's Mark. I, after reviewing the two organizations' information in our past experience with, with Proftman, I felt that we only, we interviewed three candidates, and out of those three candidates, there was only one that would, would have been a close fit to our organization. The others were just, I, I felt were just fodder. And it, because they weren't a fit and, and what have you. So I'm kind of leaning toward, more toward the, the broader scope of Mercer and the type of situation that they use and the selection process that they use. And they're, it sounds like they're more willing to work with our HR folks and do some pre-screening and what have you.
Just having access, I think, to every application, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't have it virtually, or you'd have it through the internet. I know there'll be a link and you can view just as they're coming in. They have just open access to all of their candidates as they're coming in. And if you must inform out with Mike Lecter and with Mercer is, because he's in Arizona, it will be mostly virtual meetings, but you need to meet with him, it would be virtual. Or he could come out here and travel, and that would be an additional cost.
Mr. Thompson, are you making a motion?
No, because we're still having some good discussion, but if you want a motion, I can do that.
Well, thank you for reminding us about the previous experience. And I do agree that maybe two out of three were, were considerable, but the third one was not, definitely not. So.
Yeah.
I agree about the requirements.
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion, Mark?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that the, the South King Fire extend an offer to Mercer to be our fire chief selection agency.
Is there a second?
Sorry, Mary.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Mary, I have a question. I saw something in the Proftman proposal about Zoom meetings. Do you know where Mr. Merritt is located, the lead recruiter? He was chief in Idaho. Is he still in Idaho?
He's up in there.
Oh, he's.
He lives in Moses Lake, Washington. He lives in Moses Lake, sort of east of Washington. Okay.
So he does Zoom, I know that he does Zoom interviews too, just like the candidates and stuff. So, I mean, I didn't say that if he, it was, he wasn't needed to be onsite, it would likely be virtual.
He, he was Italian chief of Bellevue Eastside Fire.
I read that, yeah. And you worked with him before.
Yeah. His profile was inside.
You know, I think, in my mind, I tend to agree. Mercer has a broader reach because of, what's his last name in County brings?
Lecter.
Lecter's, Lecter's experience, leadership training in.
Yeah, he was 10 years that he taught at Emmits, at Emmitsburg, Maryland.
I wouldn't feel that way, however, were it not for the fact that they're, he's teamed with people locally, the retired police chief and others who are part of that group. So there's both a, a national connection and also a Washington connection. If that were not a component, I would tend to say Proftman would have the edge. Because they cover both local, in-state as well as out of the state, I would tend to go along with the analysis that Commissioner Thompson described as to our, our advantage, as well as what Fire Director was talking about in Word, he would confirm. So I can, I can support that, for both, for both a motion.
Any other comments?
I agree.
Okay. All right. There's been a motion made and seconded that we hire Mercer to go out and finance a fire chief. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, vote. Gary can handle this. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll consult with him, and there are ways that we could shade the cost down. If we did advertising and if we did the brochure, I will consult with him on that and just show him what we have, and if it's something that he would be favorable to. So, great.
Anything else on the hiring process? Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
But looking at the agenda, the next item, military policy, we are taking that off of the agenda for tonight. The union hasn't acted on that yet. And I'd like to make a change here in, in just save some time and so forth. And let's do the administrative team report next.
Okay. I'd ask that the board, the bells need to make the final comments under administrative team reports, but if you have any specific questions of any of the team members, please feel free.
The, there's a, it's in the organization and plan and implementation, the creating a citizens advisory committee to generate and put public support. That is needed, but we need to make sure that we look for the right people doing, that are doing things in the community, look for people available. So there's John Hugh Public off the street. And don't get into a situation like the chambers does of having this, every time they have a public comment session, it's same six people get up and complain. But somehow, that's a good idea, it's just needs to be carefully done.
Any other, anything else? Questions or comments of the board for the team?
We've got a pretty decent, a big report on the strategic bid, bridge plan. Are we going to give other more detailed or person-to-person opportunities to sit down and talk about what the committees are deciding, hearing what they're doing?
Is that question directed towards the commission?
Yeah, specifically, I'm not. Okay.
Yeah, are you asking for more involvement from the commission?
Well, it's just, are we going to receive the information through the monthly report, or it's sort of going to be at some point reviews of where we can ask questions personally?
Yeah, there's a quarterly report from Seth that he will be in person, and then we can do Q and A. If the commission wants to ask for, designate some time at every public meeting, I'm more than happy to bring in specific people or myself to answer questions. If, if that would work with you, or I'm open to suggestions.
Here, I have a sister question.
Yep, happy to communicate. We can do quarterly, we can do monthly.
Captain Thorson's report was interesting in that he was giving instructions or requests to the rest of the department. Really, hopefully they'll read it, because he answered questions about if you're going to send something to us, mark what it is, where it goes, and whether it is still usable or not, provides some detail. He was going, giving some pretty specific direction. I think that the direction like that, somebody needs to call attention to that so that everybody reads it and understands it. Maybe that's a distinction that also Mike can, and maybe that Big C's can, can copy that page and say, pay attention to what Captain Thorson's saying.
Thanks to the internal office committee group and manager Gentry, we have converted these commissioner reports into all department reports. And so now our audience is, is larger than just governance. And so I think Tom has taken advantage of some of that to message the troops, because we know, and we understand that they're reading the reports. They're comprehensive now.
If they're reading the reports.
They are, they are, they are. Every word.
That's great. Because they send you back comments about some of those words.
Yes, just ask Executive Director Gann.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I guess this is to Executive Director Gann. Joe, can you update the board on any meetings, recent meetings, any understanding you have regarding the city of federal ways tip process?
I can. As a matter of fact, Chief Van Valkenburg and I met with Brian Davis yesterday from the city, and the finance director, Steve, met for nearly two hours. And we have another meeting scheduled for shortly after Labor Day. We had a very positive conversation. It's very clear that the council is aware of our concerns, and they don't want to just push this on to us without any sort of mitigation discussion.
So you say mitigation?
Yes, yes. So more to come. In fact, we plan on giving Laurie, setting up meetings with the commissioners, two-on-twos after Labor Day. We'll update you more then, but positive conversations.
Yeah, thanks to you and Chief Van Valkenburg.
I've been giving Doby a bad time because he's a neighbor, right across the street. Keep up that good harassment.
Yeah, keep up that good work, Bill.
Any other questions or comments?
Don't think so.
Okay, well, I have a couple. I don't have any inspirational quotes. But I do simply want to say thank you to the board for placing the trust in me to be the chief for what has been, I guess, nearly two years. It, it's been a journey, for sure, for me. Most of it has been positive. There have been moments along the way that haven't been so fun to deal with, but it's, until you're in the seat, you, you really don't know what it's like. As one of the assistant chiefs, I had all the answers under Chief Pennington and was happy to let him know how he was doing things incorrectly along the way. And then I wind up in that seat and come to find out that all of the answers I had were really pretty inaccurate. So it's been quite a learning process for me. And for those in attendance that are either remotely or in person, I simply say thank you if I've worked with you in any capacity along the way. It's, it's been, for me, it's been moving. Having a chance to reflect a little bit over the last week or so, and looking at my countdown timer that I thought was a joke, but now I don't like the numbers getting smaller. I've got eight days and some change left as the official fire chief of South King. It's time for me to go, for sure, but it's not without some degree of emotion. So it's, it's just been kind of the beginnings of the, the final chapter for me. It's emotional for me to talk about right now. But one of the, the neat things that a fire chief gets to do on occasion is acknowledge people's good work. And I, I want to do that tonight for Captain Radtini and all of the work that he did in educating the public on the live-lit measure. And he was out there everywhere. We've heard a number of reports come back in and the positive nature in which he delivered the messaging, and I believe it made a difference. He's, he's not only doing this all the time, but he's, he's out working. He's, he's not only doing this all the time, uh, but he's, he's out working in the holidays with, with the Santa stuff, um, touch a truck, you name it, the list goes on. One of the things that, uh, Brad has in his, his position that, that he's in right now is a provisional status. Um, it comes with that position. So he's, he's a captain in rank, um, because of his position. Last year, I believe, we asked Brad to, I did, uh, asked Brad to study hard and to do well on the real captain's test, which he did. He came out number one. So because of that, um, one of my last official acts as a fire chief is to make that a little more permanent tonight. So Brad, would you come up here, please?
And I'd like to read something into the record. This is a certificate of promotion in recognition of outstanding performance and dedicated service with gratitude for demonstrated fidelity. South King Fire and Rescue reposes special trust and confidence in the abilities of Brad Cheney, who is hereby promoted to the rank of captain. With the tenant privileges, responsibilities thereof effective August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations, Captain.
Thank you, obviously. Thank you to the commissioners for leading this organization, and, um, thank you to everybody. Thank you, chief. Having the privilege to brag about South King Fire to the community is probably the greatest joy, um, that I've had being here. So, um, I take that responsibility very seriously. I try to live up to it every day. I might fall short sometimes, but, uh, I appreciate your patience and your guidance, the wisdom, and most importantly, the encouragement to keep trying to achieve more and be better. Um, all of my supposed skill sets that people see in me, that comes from my parents, obviously. Um, they instilled this in me, and then, of course, uh, my beautiful wife. Her strength and determination to keep fighting, it's inspired. So, thank you very much. Always to that.
Just a second for pictures. The cabinet pictures with the, the board?
Yes.
Please.
Black, blue, and white.
Should we do the obvious budget?
Okay, um, real quick before I get into the numbers, uh, just wanted to share that, it's been no secret that we've had some technical challenges over the last couple of years as we migrated to virtual meetings and teams, and we've had to have IT support ongoing. Uh, the finance division led by, uh, Supervisor Born and, uh, Don Gentry, uh, have put a lot of work into designing a new system. I met with them this afternoon. And the goal is to get this room, uh, set up by October for our budget meetings uh, with some new technology. So a new, uh, wall with, with screens and monitors across the room, and a touch of paint, and some other upgrades to sort of enhance, um, our abilities to make, uh, good presentations. So, um, we're excited about that, and it's going to be kind of a push because they've got about a month to do it. Uh, we're offering to roll up our sleeves and even have a work party if necessary, but the, the hope is that, uh, this room will look a little bit different come October. So.
One comment?
Yes.
These, uh, flags up here were carved by Mr. Bodie.
Yes.
And they should be included somewhere in that, in the room.
I believe everything will be taken down for a fresh coat of paint and, uh, with some mounting of things, but I believe that the facilities division, uh, has a plan for protecting it and then determining where it's going to live in the future. Thank you. Yeah.
It's October this year?
Yes, got them on, got them on. Worst case, the IT will hold the monitors up for us. We'll make it happen. Chris isn't laughing.
I'm not sure they quite know where anything's going to go yet. They were talking tonight about.
Yeah, they're getting closer, they're getting closer. Um, and then the, the goal being that, um, our executive secretary can just essentially come in, push a button, and everything is pre-set up to, to work. So, uh, they've put a lot of thought, and they've, uh, gone out, well, they've gone out and actually looked at other fire districts that have implemented similar solutions. So they're not just making this up, but there's a, there's a sound plan in place.
Does the owl go away?
I believe the owl goes away. Yeah. Okay, um, so you saw in my report and you saw the emails that we are set up to start the budget development process here. Thank you, Commissioner, for, uh, your kind words and your response on the email. Uh, we're looking forward to another productive process. Um, I do know that the divisions, um, are already starting to work on their budgets. Uh, Finance Supervisor Barrett has created the, the platform in which people can start to build out those budgets. Um, so we're really excited about what this next cycle looks like for us. And, um, one difference this year, uh, we are going to have a special meeting in October. I believe it's scheduled for October third on district finances. And we kind of want to give, if you recall, we had a retreat in the summer of twenty-one, and it was just during that window where things had kind of relaxed on the pandemic, and we thought we could start meeting in person again, and then we had to go back to, you know, uh, not in-person meetings, virtual meetings and such. But during that one window, we held a retreat, and we kind of talked about, uh, where we were going, what our finances looked like, talked about engine replacement cycles, et cetera. So we want to kind of, uh, start out that meeting with a recap of what we presented back in twenty-one when a lot of things were going on, and then where we anticipate going with the bridge plan and some other things. So that's, that's a little bit unusual to have that meeting, you know, mid-budget process, but, uh, so much is driven by the budget that we want to get some, uh, policy direction moving forward. So, any questions?
Yeah, Joe, will that stop short of an alternative financing mechanism that's being considered? It's basically what we have now.
It is.
The M and O, the M and O and the basic property.
Exactly, and we'll take into consideration the fact that the LIDLIT just passed, and what does that look like for the district? Um, you know, there's been some front, uh, numbers thrown out there. We don't get the numbers from the county until next month, and those are preliminary, and they continue through November. So, um, I haven't even started plugging in what that looks like. We just simply don't know at this point. Uh, but yes, it will stop short of, of direction in terms of what happens next year. That's all part of the strategic bridge plan. Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, um, as I thought might happen, I told you last month that we were sitting pretty good on the budget, but I expected the, the, um, variance to shrink a little bit. Um, and that did happen this month. We had a high number of expenditures, including our annual, um, insurance renewal. So, uh, signed checks today, and good golly, there were a number of checks to sign. So, um, our monthly expenditures were higher than, uh, what would be average, and certainly higher than what's been the norm this year, but because some of the bills came in that we had to pay. Uh, but sitting year-to-date, uh, we are sixty-five and forty-four hundreds of a percent, which puts us at one in twenty-three hundredths percent under budget. So still under budget by one point two, three percent, which is great. Uh, but, um, not as great as it was last, last month when we were closer to two percent. And with the particulars, we have Finance Supervisor Kelsey Barrett.
Okay, so we have our mid-month utilities totaling three hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Our accounts payable warrants totaling one million, four hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-three cents. Our payroll direct deposit totaling one million, four hundred seventy-two thousand, six hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. Our EFTPS totaling three hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred and one dollars. And then our medical claims processed as of August twenty-second totaling three hundred seven thousand, three hundred fifty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents for the total accrual of three million, eight hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Is there a motion and a second to approve the vouchers?
So move.
I'll second.
All right, motion's been made, seconded to approve the vouchers. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Gary can answer. All right. At this time, uh, the board is going to go into executive session, pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty-one forty-four V, to plan or adopt the strategy or position to be taken by the governing body during the course of any professional negotiations. Joining the board in the executive session will be, um, Eric Quinn, our legal counsel. We, we just, and also Lori Barry, too. We anticipate the executive session lasting for fifteen minutes. Action may or may not be taken after the executive session. At this time, we will recess for five minutes to get everyone transferred into executive session. At the end of executive session, we will take a two-minute recess to get everyone transferred back home to the special meeting.